Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, people.
That's okay. You're not a bother, thank you, Peter. Wait, where are you getting?
Yeah, he's got some, hey, cows.
Besides.
I'd like to motion to strike item K. A. Real budget amount of general funding in the 001 that increases on revenue to add this things and increases in expenses for technical fees and insurance premiums from the agenda for the version of ten and same. I would like to discuss this in a special meeting if we could. As we all aware, let us look at the budget and how this is going to affect it, where is it coming from, and do we have a little more time to get to your interest from? So, now, please, I believe.
Yeah, because it's a lot. The thing is, uh, well, you need to pay, well, we will, we can approve the insurance bill with respect.
Yeah.
And it will be accepted. We have the insurance number, but, uh, oh, it's all credit or not, yeah, it'll be just, it'll be a few months before we get another invoice again. Because of the other fees that we need to increase, that's why we're trying to pay. Okay, such, like I said, I just want to make sure, well, we need to pay that bill, I think, by voice, but...
And, and I would like to, um, have a special meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks. I'm, I'm usually special for holidays, but I think that would give us an apartment.
Yes.
I'd say I got a motion to, uh, to strike K. From consent. At table, that, picture. I have a motion to have a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?
Yes, I am with you.
Okay. Okay, business agenda.
That's right. Is that a three of the present agenda, last, last year?
No, no, no.
Okay, there's a motion to the, this is the agenda as amended.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, business agenda. Discussions, sir. Can we talk? Discussions.
You'll be there.
Look, my knees are down.
That's my bottle of water in a cup. Discussion and possible action on hiring someone in the town hall. If you want to discuss that any further, have we had any budgets that we, having... I made a few phone calls, here's kind of what I'm thinking. Okay, good. Can we just buy your vacuum and, and, you know, I'll just make sure that it clean and then it's not an extra thing for the town.
If possible, why don't you turn on the next Sunday motion?
My second.
And I have a motion made, and I got a second. All in favor?
I'd like to hear.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you have enough money in your... Turn off in the blanket. Yeah, in the blanket, purchase that. Definitely. So, that's good.
Okay.
So, this gets, goes away. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, discussion of possible action on purchasing video recorder, video of the town hall meetings. I haven't had any additional information gathered on that.
I've seen there's a way also to do it. We're leaving, I'm sorry, now, if we don't leave.
Okay.
I'd like to motion to revise this line from the agenda. Go further.
Press motion made.
My second.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Hello? This is a possible action, uh, purchasing and installing carpet in town hall. Yeah, I think we need to get this done one hundred percent fast.
This is in the budget, because when we went through that process, I had a quote. So, in your packet, you have a quote that's from Mill Creek. Um, he came out and measured and then sent us a quote. Um, the quote, uh, estimated totals thirteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, and that's padding and carpet and then like this, the stuff to do the seams. I mean, he came out and he explained how he was gonna fix this one over here, uh, and so that, that, I did call, uh, Lowe's and talked to them just to get a second quote based on the square footage. Um, if we get the right carpet, we can get free installation from them. So, his estimate for carpet and padding was six seventy-five, and then there may be more costs for the, the, the seams and things like that. He did say he could come and do a measurement, but they're, they're two miles outside of their, where they kind of measure for free, so they would get hard for that, so.
It's under a thousand dollars for those to come out and install it.
Yes.
They have to pay.
Is it same quality? Um, I, yeah, I just said anyone loves some commercial carpet, uh...
Mill Creek's always hot, super hot.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and with that, like I said, uh, we have to get carpet that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per square...
No.
Dollar twenty-five, I'm sorry, a dollar twenty-five per square foot for the pre-installation, uh, which I just need to look online and like seven, like years to do that, so. I think, I agree with us.
A thousand dollars carpet was way over brush, right?
I'm, I'm sorry. A dollar twenty-five.
A dollar twenty-five, yeah. It's the padding, you want to know what the padding is, you want better padding than carpet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so the padding, I think, was a dollar per square foot. Well, let's make sure that because, you're on concrete? Yes. And it just squish.
Well, the cone alone seeping up through that concrete, yeah.
Well, it'll just squish.
But it has to light and, and not squish.
And not squish, because it's on that cold concrete. Okay. So, okay.
So, I make a motion, we should, what is it, a thousand dollars?
Yes.
For carpeting?
And insulation.
And insulation, make that all covered.
I, I make a second.
I have a motion made, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, now, you got your comments. Make it, make it go.
Aye.
Discussion possible action on streetlight, interest move, uh, out, outage from the toll LT activity.
Okay.
I had a school, this cop, driver called me this morning, and he not missed his turnoff, not putting the ditch up, with little kids. That one night, that night. I wonder why they liked them all sudden. He said it was like...
Well, son, it's been out for two weeks now.
Even though he hadn't been out long.
Well, he come back and again, he did.
Yeah, very happy.
Well, I read the emails, but you guys are passing along, I noticed that you had included Spencer, now have you heard from Spencer?
No, I have not. I wanted to see what you guys thoughts were, because, okay, here's what we want, now tell me you can do it.
Okay. Personally, I think they need two lanes actually, one of, each side of the intersection.
I am in full grants with that, especially if we're gonna widen that out, but they're widening the whole thing anyway. I think things to happen, and the question that I have is, what's the cost of the town? And what's the cost of OGA? What does the new one do? I think, I think we need to get Spencer to attend on that.
Oh, I remember.
Because that's gonna be a deal to OGA issue.
Yes.
If we just, yeah, wish to get it done for public safety.
Well, can get moved to the other side of the street can occur quickly.
Right.
Getting the second one on this side is not gonna happen for two years. The concrete, though, the asphalt is not to be laid until twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so...
For this, uh, last thing now, um...
That makes sense, that makes sense.
That's why I want better lining at those ditches, because on that far side, it's not gonna like those ditches.
I, I, I understand that, but the new LEDs that they've got for the streets, uh, project a lot more light than what we're used to here. So, if they go with something like that, that it can actually shine across, that's gonna be helpful one, um...
Hey, what's up, man? Hey.
They can solve a lot of that.
Well, so, they've got, they've got some of them now, especially when you're talking about the two lanes that project more to cover the, cover the distance.
Okay.
And that's a rule to count. But, uh, recommendation I would make, if we have lights going down main, and they just stop short of the intersection, if we can get another light pole short, closer to the intersection, it's not gonna be out the intersection.
Oh, that's the second one.
If we're closer to...
Well, I'll tell you what, that's...
Uh, for, to light Main Street, well, that will help with it.
Okay, here's the second drawing with this, with the, okay, I can somewhat, they have proposed...
Yeah, thank you, I'm sitting here working on it.
Uh, this is the line that I like to work on, because it's, it shows where the fences are.
Yeah.
Where the fences are, are literally the top of the hill, okay?
Right. So, should we real quick what you're calling fences?
Okay, fences are the X's. Right, right here.
Sorry, I have too many birthdays, I was told.
Okay, your arm got too short. So, he's tough at it, his arm quit growing.
Wow, Tom, there's some problem, because I have too many birthdays.
Okay.
Yeah, I see it, I got you.
You see the X's?
Uh-huh.
That's the fence line.
Right.
That's the top of the ridge line.
Okay.
So, their proposal number two was back behind that ridge to start with, and that is what we're gonna get to bring up.
Okay, so, I'm going to take a fraction of twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, would you please, because I want to give you another, the other mark, some these little boxes right here.
One second.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, okay, here's our two existing lanes. They're going to, you know, the two.
Right.
And right now, our road is like this.
Yeah.
And the ditches are kind of where they are now.
Right.
We're gonna move those ditches over here.
Right.
Now, the thing that, he can't, I think, right here, this is the high pressure gas line.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I can tell, well, I mean, this is the high pressure bank.
Mm-hmm.
So, for you to see it coming, this, you can't see behind the bank.
No.
And they're gonna tap off to the light poles on this side of the road.
Everything over here is cut down, question, if I remember right.
Yes.
What I'm suggesting is, is like right here, with all your construction starts and stops here, that's not gonna give you a whole lot of light over here, but with one over here...
Well, here's where they want to put it over here. They want to put it here.
Right, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry.
On that side.
Yep.
And there's a pole right there they can tap from.
Yep.
There is still a pole, um, right here.
Yeah, that's not the rest of them.
Or, it's close to, no, is it close to this, because it's behind the, it's behind the concrete, it's right here.
Well...
So, there's a pole right here.
Yeah.
That they can bring down too. Here's where these ditches are going to be again.
Okay, so, here's what I would recommend, the, because that falls up on the hill right next to that, right?
And they, and right, now, that's the pole that is taking care of the streetlight now.
Okay. Where are you talking about, what a streetlight?
Down here, on the pole.
Right, down here?
But they gotta tap into electricity, there's no electricity on this side of the road.
How long are they on?
Uh-uh.
How long are they?
Well, no, it's on this side, the pole is all on this side of the road. The main feeder, it's, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, and one.
Maybe it's where the, maybe it's where the, the road comes through that.
Yeah, this is, this is on the road.
This is the main road. The old road is, are these two lines right here. See this, that right here, and this right here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not straight, I can't go straight. That's the kind of...
Okay, that's a little here now.
Right, no.
Okay, I'm, now, probably, you know, because I, I was thinking, this, this, this was it, right here.
No, this is the, it's a...
All the highlighted area, the gray areas, and the new road that's being built.
Right there, right there, the light pole is right here.
Right.
Well, they need to put, well, we need to, they have to, we have to put that along the off ramp.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's gonna go, that right there is what's gonna turn into here.
And that's going all the way back to here.
Well, because this, yeah, this one right here, this traffic is going on this one here, it's giving us, traffic on this side is going, that one.
Well, they need to, well, they're off.
Start going back here, stay here.
Oh, okay, I see, that, that, okay. I think if we do this, uh, like...
Do that for now, and then...
That's gonna help out a lot, if we get one.
Get one in here, that we, gotta be across from each other.
Yeah, that's, that's about the, that's the matter, because you can't, everybody in there has got to get rid of that, that's what I have to call.
Just stay on, okay, move it up even further, closer to the gas line, now the ditch down here. Up closer to the gas line.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's...
Now, I reckon, unless we're not, unless we're chance of equipment, not hit it or something, this turn.
The gas line is up here. It's, it's right here, and right kind of, well, no, it needs to be in front of the hill.
Yeah, it's gotta be in front of that hill.
In front of the hill, somewhere down in...
It's gotta be down below that hill.
Yeah.
Because it, it is...
Yeah, I, I think the X is on top of the hill.
Hey, the one on the, the one on the, uh, north side, on thirty-three?
Do it there.
Does it definitely go, get it, that we need to, we need to sponsor in and make sure that they're communicating and what they can do.
I'm wondering, I have answered the one of your questions.
I got it. Okay. I wonder if they could put not just light in the middle, in the middle, how, how, how it...
Uh, do you have the right power, I need it.
Well, they got my power, they need one.
No, that's, I don't know, I'm, I'm...
There's a pole, there's a pole.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a pole right, we can actually see the pole, it's on here.
I think from a public safety standpoint, somebody fled, and I'll put the pole in the middle of the, of the, right, 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 yeah, I'm like, yeah, I'm like...
Like I said, I was just...
That's the first wreck I had, on, first wreck I saw, it was like, oh, middle of the road.
We had, we had, I mean, there's a morning time, there's a lot of times. Yeah, I'm like, yeah, that's, that's, but...
I'm sorry.
I forgot to tape the cable.
But anyway, we can get this okay, we've got to talk to ODOT, he's gonna improve the lighting on this ditch, because it's gonna be two frickin' years before they come in and start laying asphalt, twenty twenty-five.
Right, we have to, that's marked that intersection, so we won't, that people are running off in the ditch.
Yeah, so, I'll drop Cody a note, that I wish I had...
One thing I didn't see was, was who's responsible, this work cost, and everything else, and my concern...
Or one of you, then, the...
Okay.
Okay, the, oh, no, let me start over. I had nobody pull the bill. Our total bill for the town is twelve hundred thirteen thousand...
About one thousand eighty-one dollars.
Of one of the lights.
For the lights.
And I, let's, we know we have more than ten lights.
Mm-hmm.
So, the cost to operate on a long-term basis shouldn't be more than a hundred.
I'm, I'm not really worried about the cost to operate.
But the pole, I have no idea. I wasn't here.
Well, the, where I'm going with that is, is that construction company took out, or they were already there, so, are we, because I didn't read it in the communications.
Oh, I haven't, that's kind of like, oh, what has to...
I heard of the contractors, should be, they took it out, and I just kind of had to take it out, that they planned for that in their bid, or they're planning on moving it, that's the information I've got.
That's what, we need to get from ODOT, possibly, before we even talk to Spencer.
Uh, we're going in the...
Spencer's being copied on all of this.
Yeah.
And he's actually asked us to work with, that other name that you don't know.
OGA engineers, also, I know, yeah, and also, that...
Yes, Spencer asked him to be looked in on all the emails.
Right, okay. Um, yeah, I don't know, that's, off broader, there shouldn't be a...
I don't...
It should be there, it should be there, okay, state's cost.
Yeah, I mean, maintaining, maintaining it as such, you know, that's, that's...
Yeah, that's why I wondered about how much it's costing us.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not costing us, it didn't done quickly, because, yeah, that's public safety standpoint, that's a, that's a huge issue.
But, uh, I'm sorry, it, it's not acceptable. Who else has turned in today? You turned in today, how do you like our new streetlight?
I come in so fast, I didn't even pay attention.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't even care. I've been standing on...
She's, she's been cautious since then.
I don't know, I'm like, construction sign with the flashing light on.
It's worth you ever to go look at it.
Yeah, I got it, I'm like...
Nobody's gonna leave a dime after they... Well, they gotta get turned around.
I might be leaving fast enough that I don't need to do it.
Well, you cannot see it when you leave.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right, so, there's, there's...
So, if you, if you don't mind, I'll proceed and I'll keep everybody copied on the emails.
Uh, you might motion, shoot colors up on this one, or on the other one.
You select my motion, shoot colors on?
And I just see, I make the...
I, 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 I.
I may go to contractors and buy, buy some little red, just little red dooley flippers alongside the road, and then they'll want to, yeah.
Well, I brought the music, that construction, I think, they'll probably take them out every day, because they're gonna cross that road all day.
Those, they need, they need, they need to, something there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, you're getting me, we've had bus drivers calling, we've had people not seeing it.
I, I think that's...
Right there, she almost went the ditch.
Well, yeah, I think that's a simple call to ODOT, to say, would you play on a map here, and let's talk about this.
It's, it's gonna be annoying, uh, because ODOT is, when I visit the town, because that's why I, they wanted me to contact the contractor. The contract is not in parent's voice.
Yeah.
Contract is with ODOT, and the Stillwater residency office is in charge of that contract.
Have you...
You have, yeah, I think, I understand.
Oh, I do.
I said, who?
Who? Uh, Cody, yes, what's his name?
Oh, Cody, uh...
He's a good guy.
Are you, well, yeah.
He told me some things, and things have had change, some things have, never mind. We've got an understanding. I think I do have their attention.
All right, so, we're getting a little...
We're getting on that, okay. Discussion possible action, who, that, they, with, they, they need to be used for backup together.
So, I got the notification about this weekend, that our, uh, notice of intent have been approved, and that we are going to proceed with the application for the grant for the generator.
One generator?
One generator, yes.
On tech, OGA.
Thank you, Carl. Still can't believe you're the one who came up with that, I feel like, I'll stop there. I was gonna, um, so, Wade has been, uh, looking into generator, a number of them, generators from different people, um...
Did we have the amount, Andrea?
Uh, no, uh, it's a seventy, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five matching grant.
Okay.
Um, I was going to propose that, uh, Wade and I are gonna sit down and look at the generators, try figure out what's gonna work best, get all the stuff put together, and I'd like to have same special meeting that we're gonna have for, uh, the other deal.
You bring Charles in on here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be getting that, they must carry his.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've talked to him a little bit about it, and, uh, also Devon and Dylan have been looked in on the budget, because, uh, did you ever make him your system chief?
Do what?
Did you ever make Dylan your system chief? Are you still acting?
Worse, yeah.
Well, his, his officership, so, we, we've been trying to work with them as well, make sure we have the, all the numbers, and I'd like to bring that, present all of that to the board, so we can, just like we did with the grant for the lagoons, make sure we're all on board with the generator, the call, all projections, and then we'll just send it off. So, that work everybody? Good?
Yes.
All right. Um, I don't think there's anything else for me to do on that one, that's more of a, I don't know where we're at. I suppose a special meeting, no picture.
Yes.
Whether that's down in, like, the...
Thank you. Uh, that's, I'd like to say, if there's a possible screw-up, the state office personnel to answer, answer questions and provide request, not for this, say, offer.
Do you have a, that's our meeting, number one? I have a copy over here, do you know, like, Jack Bowery, are you the community, use your copy to the original? I think she wants to use her original.
I'm glad you're still with us, right?
Okay, did you talk to Daz and the board to give approval to the monitor, to touch generally, and whoever has the, his answers, they need to respect the broad, because people ask the question, they'll give the answers, and he may ask for documentation to be included in whatever he needs to be part of his, of his, of his, of his, okay?
Everybody on that group?
So, we still have a...
You have a motion to a charge.
I have a starting.
My second is...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all three of us need this one. Thank you. And you just send it out to him in the morning, he's available for his conversation.
Okay, the next study will be, part of the bill, is he, oh, Charles.
Okay.
Before you get started?
No.
I need to get with you, right, after you get done.
Okay.
All right, so, good thing you're ready.
Nah. Good thing for me.
All right. Um, we had, first month, we had nine drifts, one car wreck, three grass fires, and twelve mutilated instances. We made several fairs on trucks, put tires on a couple of trucks, um, kind of hit on that, um, we finished up, game's over for Langston, so we're done covering that, and I'm working on putting this big package together, we did get the grant for the add-on to the station, so...
Where you going with it?
West, towards the city shop.
Okay.
Uh, or about it, the only choice I've got.
Not hard drive through there anyway.
And so, I have to move a lot of stuff if I want east.
Oh, boy.
Air conditioning, sewer, gas, all kinds of stuff, water, and, yeah.
But...
Are you gonna extend any water for the new?
No.
We need to get water.
Yeah, that's, uh...
Well, that's, that's another subject, but I was, I was just asking.
I'll let you on your nuts, water from the next, the maintenance building, yeah.
Well, and we're gonna put, how are we gonna put the generator?
Um, I'll talk about that at the next meeting, but I'm thinking on that, at the same end of the, the...
The west?
East, east end of the fire department where the gas is already coming in, east end.
The reason I say that is, is gas.
Well, we, that's not that big of a deal.
You gotta run gas long ways, because this gas is over in the alley on the south side of the church. Because the gas meter for city hall and the fire department, that's right behind the museum.
It's right, that is them.
The old museum?
Yeah.
It's the, across the whole of the road.
And to be able to do that, that's why the old city hall is now total electric. And we come off of that building and ran to the fire department. Because they went total electric, so we were able to tie that line and just come that way.
Oh, gee, should put, if you ask them, they should put a meter over by the fire department without charging, I mean, that's what they've been doing.
On ours, we're fine, but for the city shop, I mean, they should still live.
Yeah, yeah.
I was saying, that's where it's-
We can't, we're going to-
First of all, we can't talk about it, we have to work on it.
We have to do that. Another, remember that, I'm, I forgot.
Well, that, that's you.
For, uh, I said, working on getting a bid sheet made up for the new add-on so we can get it turned in town and have it go out for bids, um. With everything going on, we haven't been able to do much work on the full rescue, um, hopefully we can get something going on for what's going on.
On the little what?
The rescue building.
They've got a one-time brush rack that they took the brush pumper and bed off of and they put a rest-
Oh, the rescue.
Rescue truck.
Oh, the one that we've already built them?
It's bed set up.
They're down all there, we're just gonna put it all together.
Yeah. Look at everything, all the thing we don't have and we're waiting till we get everything situated and see what size it, probably gonna put a two-hundred gallon tank in it. By the way, if something was to happen, murder out there, we do have more, I mean-
Well, quick, quick comment, so you get a bigger apparatus or- Um, have you guys planned on building that add-on yourself or are you contracting out there somebody else?
Yeah, it'll be a pressure, yeah. We talked about the element for what everybody running and my job isn't slowing up any.
It's taken five years to build.
Other than that, um, let, to let y'all know, we are, I mean, you got a chief's meeting next Monday, which will really be tough, knew about it. The commissioners have agreed for us to go for a fifteen-year, uh, tax, bumping it from ten to fifteen. It's not changing anything, it's just continuation.
Fifteen years.
And because you buy a truck now, you're two years out, for sure. You know, if it's a new build on a brush pumper, you're two years out, if it's a conventional, still, if it's a custom, like our engines, four years. While you, and that truck depending on five hundred thousand now, well, that leaves you six years to pay off a six thousand, or five hundred thousand dollar truck. Where it used to, you can, you still add nine left, so.
Well, what you used to be able to buy for a hundred thousand, it cost you a half, a full eight and a half.
Yeah, exactly. So, they understand, and they know because they're buying equipment too, you know? So, if we was able to get it past that, we can continue to buy stuff and be able to pay for it.
Don't have to go before the people go, go to it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good, that the commissioners first.
Alright.
Um, something on that, the, of all the fire departments, the, um, fire commissioner asked them to make a presentation to the board commissioners. And, uh, I was doing coil with one of your four departments that made that presentation?
Uh, no, there was, all the three county they did.
There's thirteen in total, I believe, right?
How many?
There were thirteen, I don't know how many there are now.
Um, depending on how this goes, there'll be fourteen, and they're pretty fishbogging.
So, looking to add to, but they did, uh, they did a full one slide presentation with, uh, vehicles and all kinds of different stuff. From what I understand, the commissioners, it was a very, very good presentation.
There's three, one, two, three?
They've got two states, they got a brand new station now in Logan County. They're kind of like we are, they got almost as much area in southwestern Logan County as like us in Pink County.
Yeah.
Maybe four closets or five.
Sounds like that's been said before, Tom, too.
I thought I had a bill going, but, so I don't know. I thought I had a shop already built that we was looking at buying, but that kind of fell through. Been out there, what is that, thirty-three? I don't even know what road that is now.
Haylen Hill child.
Haylen Hill child, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
And we got the Firehouse Christmas coming up on the night.
Anyway.
I was gonna say, we got the Firehouse Christmas coming up on the night, the Maridian and, uh, Langston are both gonna be joining us, we're-
Yes, yes, I forgot about that, sorry guys, I'm-
What day is that?
December ninth.
December ninth.
Saturday, my birthday party, I know.
We're not a dollar short, if we get all the dollars we can get.
Well, happy birthday, it's over.
That's it?
You got anything else?
Uh, I think that's it, I'm probably forgetting something, that's, um, the only thing, what we're looking at doing is, um, the money that we got from working the Langston football game, we're looking at getting a medics kid unit for our gator.
Excellent.
So. Okay, well, probably I have to put a little in with it, but, I mean, most of, so. Depending on how it's strapped in.
Thank you for that. Uh, financial report.
Um, so the balances, oh, I didn't get a title on that, these are the balances out of the end of, um, October, not that kind of, so, sorry about that. In general fund, we have sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seven cents. In CPWA, there's sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And the fire department, uh, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one. And then you also have a asset review report and, uh, budget to act on and as of the end of October.
Now, is that just in the general fund or is that including the audit, um?
That's just general, but remember we had that fourteen, um, that, uh, grant money, so it hasn't come out yet, that was still including that fourteen thousand. The, um, the forestry grant that was put into our-
Oh, the lobby, so that's still in there?
That, that is with that, um, amount included, the sixty-five thousand, so it's-
We need to write a check for that, huh?
We did.
Oh.
And it's gone to county now, it just hadn't cleared the bank.
I thought I remember signing it.
Yes, yeah, okay, it hasn't cleared the bank yet, so.
Now, did we get the check from the school yet?
I have not seen the check from the school.
Yet.
Yet.
It may have been approved in the last nine.
Okay, I will let, I will let you know when we get that, but I'll let you all know.
Okay.
Yep?
Uh, yep, that's always.
I invite the report.
Um, been cleaning up in front of the shop, trying to start the inventory, just see what parts we actually have. Uh, also wanted to see what y'all thought about the Ford tractor, the Batwing, as far as taking care of it. Yep. I mean, just, just a thought, just a thought. I already pulled Batwing back around behind the shop, clear out that area.
Yeah, I had that, we had that way up here at my stall, and he said he could fix it.
Oh, really? What about tractor?
Traction, these batteries probably, it run.
Really?
It run.
Wow.
Honey changle worn, couldn't use fuel in it.
I mean, Christmas lights, all that-
Has it been winterized, has it got any? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And the radiator?
Well, I'm sure the block is full of water too, to be stacked, it's that tall. Yeah, I'm sure all that.
I bet it doesn't last a whole, I know it hasn't lasted four years.
Well, I was just wondering if we want to keep it or not, or-
Whatever, whatever y'all want to do.
Well, if it starts up, it'd be worth a lot more than that. So, I think we need to get it winterized.
Pretty old.
It did have, I mean, pretty young.
Okay.
It's been sitting there fifty-four years.
Y'all know more about it than me, I don't know that much.
Okay, sorry. I wouldn't have, we don't really have the use for it. And I went to the, if there's guns, we'll get a lot more money out of it.
It could be used, 'cause we got an alleyway and run down.
We may want a bigger brush hog that we could kick up somewhere. In the-
I'm pretty sure, so, general idea is that Wade, take one guy and see if he can start, see what makes, that will figure out what we're up with.
And the key, the, it's up there.
He can tell you where the key is, if you hear that, wait.
Right.
Let me know.
If it's hidden in there?
Yeah.
I bet I can find it. I played that game.
Let me know. But, yeah, the only thing is, uh, we need the tires when it was, or went down because it's sitting there.
Oh, sure, yeah.
We need a tire.
Even if it looks like it's moved in a while.
It hasn't.
Yeah, it's not, because, uh, that one battles. We could-
We're talking about that, by some of the, the cars that they did.
All you gotta do is get, you know, uh-
Yeah.
And it's, uh-
Gearbox.
Gearbox, that's it.
Cause I talked to Bex about it, they do not think it can be repaired, nobody has accepted that. So, maybe if we put new gearboxes on it, whatever it goes to happen.
Well, you put universal gearbox, as long as it's got the same spines.
About same shape.
All I could say is that Bex told me it cannot be repaired.
Cause they want us to sell it to them.
Well, that is not good.
And then lock it, it's probably salt flying and trash out your pipe.
No, I was just, I was also wondering about putting any fencing around the shop. Just on that, on the left side.
We, this had been, if you're, I mean, I got some concerns about this. That idea had been brought up before and I would say, probably need to check with D Q first. Grandfather right now not having them, if we go to put one in, it could possibly cause us to have to put the four D E K stacks, the heavy gauge, all the way around the backside of baseball field, and we're talking about seventy-eight.
Which they let be.
Well, if they're going to be bringing the, we need to get fire partners in place too, I would think.
Now, if he puts it on the west side, it won't-
Yeah, I was just wanting to put it on the west side just to hide all our crap over there.
Alright, if you're talking about coming out like ten foot off the building and going back to some of the hind stuff, twelve whatever?
Maybe three panels, three panels.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't be, you're talking about privacy fence instead of a security fence?
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't go all the way across, but I would check with D E Q first to make sure that it's not gonna screw up our grandfather on the-
We need to check our plaque, cause I think there's a five road to there.
Well, he's just talking about putting up a simple three-panel privacy fence just for hind stuff?
We would just look real clean and we can hide everything back there and, yeah.
I'd almost do it on the door side. On the door side where it's totally behind the building.
Well, anyway, let's talk about that.
Take, take a look at that, check into that, and like, put that on the, on the side of the, just to talk about these points at a time.
Okay, next item, uh, we need to, that, had a barricade back door inside the museum, cause I must've been there three times now.
More than that, Kevin reported that they can keep, there's kids in this town that are kicking that in. We need some.
My son and my girls were hanging.
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's not the kids that have cars.
No.
It's, they have nothing better to do than wander around the town, you know, that they ski, unless they're big enough to do some daring. They're not big enough to drive yet.
They're not, that's still a pretty havoc.
Yes. And it's straight back.
We had barricaded the back door inside.
Down in that lower area.
Yeah. But it also, uh, we have three links in, in, on the roof.
Where in the water?
The sides of the museum. It's three of them. I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, get me, I will look at it.
Be careful, it's rotted.
Well, I mean, I've covered thousands of black roofs, quite a good living.
Are they flat?
Yep. Well, I did for a living.
Yep, I'll say, I understand, but make sure that it's not rotted.
We could, I check, you wanna know if it's rotten anyway.
I'm not worried, I'm worried that you fall on through.
You're not, you're not gonna fall through.
You're not falling, I think we're gonna fall.
It's thick, it's probably not that thick, you know, solid, probably.
Okay.
They think it'd be thick for some asphalt patch, just trying to-
Throw a bucket on top of it?
I know that whole carriage house down the arm, the care torn, he finds a door there.
Yeah. You roll that whole roof, you know, eight separate-
You guys have?
Yeah, I guess we had a, or a semi running in Indian Hall.
All over town the other day, picked up a, uh, uh, parked in the alleyway, hooked his monkey on something, I don't know what all of them on, but, yeah. Did you get the name off the curb?
No, I didn't see it, I was reported to me, so, yeah.
They got the, they had, if you got the name off the curb and buy some plate, we could've done something.
Yeah, yeah.
Think we missed that?
And I got your deal on my list as far as repairing the box inside, so.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Alright.
Is that maintenance?
Yeah.
Turn the page, turn the page.
We got, uh, as soon as possible, actually I'm getting two loads of springy gravel for alleys by water tower.
Spring.
Let's just, who's got this one here?
Wade, is this yours, screams or gravel for the other way?
Yeah, for the water tower, it's just getting, we've had some of the old floors all gone, the road, you know?
But that's where the water tower is supposed to be. There needs a color put down there.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, yeah.
All it has is a little three-inch pipe.
Right.
So, that's all it's got, that's all they put in there.
I got a pile of that.
What's his name, your?
Three-inch pipe.
Whit, 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 Whitney?
Hell. Oh, Whitna.
Yeah, Whitna.
The old mayor's son.
Yeah. He put that in there, thinking that's gonna cover all the, all the water, three-inch pipe is not enough to correct. That was stupid.
Actually, the other end of the alleyway, the trash truck, thought that was smashed, getting pretty good.
Uh, some of your channeling stuff that are smashed in? They, they use, uh, those are great tringle tools, the jaws and all that kinda stuff, doesn't like taking kids around and doing that with them, so. I would say, get with your fire chief here, we can talk him a little bit, you know, maybe buy him a case of beer or something, and see if, uh, see if he can get the guys to audition training for you.
Will you get her that?
Do you have a cost on the gravel and fines, uh, that you're proposing here? Did you get a cost on the gravel and fines that you're proposing?
Around four hundred and thirty, I believe, wasn't it?
Thirty, what are you talking about, that truck?
Fourteen.
Fourteen tons?
About, just about two.
That's the one you want, though?
I mean, but that was- I thought it was plenty of all.
If you put gravel in the-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can probably find some steel fibers, I mean, a nine-inch or foot, uh, foot in or back in there.
I probably got one over there in Guthrie, just sitting in the back.
Legally, on something like that, it cannot be any smaller than a twelve. And I would be a twelve-inch squash.
Being street ground, yeah.
But it can't be anything smaller than a twelve. But if you need the, you can get a squash. An oval, egg ones, it's still got the same flow amount through there.
Right.
But you don't have to dig it as deep.
Yeah, and they're wider than we need it, I don't want to bet you that District Two has probably got some cutoffs from some of theirs that go down that would be wide enough to do the job, so you might see if you can call Zach over District Two.
I know that, yeah.
Okay, um, he's not a Ken, is he? I don't know, I just mess or relate around here. I wouldn't be betting, I'll tell you guys, I'd call Zach, see if, see if they got one, maybe pop it out.
Yeah, that, yeah, but maybe you work on that, get one, one over there first before we get gravel.
Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah.
Does anybody have a problem with that, the gravel over there, are we gonna wash that quite a bit?
No, but I think we do need to get stuff, I think they're for football.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Before you, boy, you don't wanna put down.
Right.
I call it, you guys call it.
Is that everything sitting there ready to go before we start getting any work on from halfway through and pretty much down the road?
Yes, and so you might want to get, yeah.
Find your possible list.
Well, that's what I was saying, District Two's got some, I know District One was bad, but District Two's, they did two, uh, something off that off a little bit for us, but why?
And ODOT, yeah, they-
I don't mind it.
I know all the, I did three, three, man.
Then we can get that, we can, then we can get some gravel. Work happening. Uh, super.
Did we ever get the Smith properties out? Did we ever get the Smith properties alley crammed?
No. Probably did.
No, we, we put dirt down on it and then it rained on us for a month, washed all the dirt down that we put down the base. We got gravel in, but we, we didn't get a new base built on it. That was right before we.
Probably had dirt all been there for a while too.
We, we did, and then it, yeah, you, you, I put some down, you put some down, we both worked it, and then it rained on us and washed all of it down.
I'm just saying, guys, if we start working there, we haven't, it can tear apart, we're still.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't tell me where the cheese is, be attracted away that day either. Yeah. You have a bigger bucket.
Hold on, but some other part of us.
If you have it, it's good, cause I would.
Okay.
I had my crack in your shop at that time, okay.
Did you, that, that new house, newish, last couple of years' house over on, uh, Iowa, that has those three big miles of dirt behind it, you ever get seen?
Yeah, I always talked to them, they are gonna do something with it.
Okay.
And I did volunteer, or, yeah. Whatever you don't want.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need to do some, uh, substrate or something, uh, for it. We did, we're starting quick gravel, but, uh, we do one for one, we'll do one for another. We're not doing any of those.
I'm saying.
No, that's, that's.
All that gra, all that dirt that we need to put on is gone.
Like two weeks after, we got none working yet.
Well, we weren't about.
Right before gravel.
Should've put in the gravel, but had the gravel come the second time we done the dirt.
Anyway, we know better, so. Uh, you might check on that as well, I guess is what I would say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cemetery report.
Uh, March one plot for a new cemetery residence out there a couple of years ago. Other than I.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Man, I was fighting all same here, it's one of them. Pass it down.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, it's certainly, I think.
I suppose it's better than ten.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that?
Not for the fall yet.
Okay. Court, 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 before.
I don't have anything for the court clerk side of it.
Um, I did, I did make another connection today about our sewer issue over there.
Sewer issue?
Yeah, yeah. We're going down Iowa, driving down, right here at first lot, we come in from the hospital late one night, had the wind down.
Smelled like we were in the sewer.
Smelled like somebody pooped in my lap.
We don't know.
We had a little side over there.
We have not, no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah. Looks like they're calling out trailer park out, outside of the house.
Where, where's that? No one, that road, this, north of you, lady?
Yes, north of, uh, the, the dinner house.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's right on that.
Is it a cross from Evans?
No, it's further south, there's an empty lot that has trees on it, and it's right there, south of it.
Isn't that what, uh, the.
Okay, so what's the problem, was somebody dumping, or do we have a leak?
No, they had, they had tapped in to the sewer line, the man, their sewer line. And when they pulled the trailer out, it, they didn't cap it, cap it, and it just. I think the other houses connect, I think they're both connected together, and then.
Oh, it's running on the ground, is what you're telling me?
It's just keeping up. We got south wind.
Okay, so do we, do we think there's a blockage on either side of the rain there that's causing it?
Okay, guys, this is where we start getting liability for the town. We need to call somebody immediately, as in tomorrow.
Well, uh, no, okay, you're talking about private property, private town, right?
Yeah.
And you checked the town's stuff.
The town's stuff is fine.
Okay, as you said, you made contact with somebody.
US, and the next contact is in Colorado. But lately, I've got another name, actually today, uh, somebody over in Perkins that may have acquired it, so.
Well.
I would try to get ahold of them.
If you will, tell me where it's at, I can check the court records and we can see the deeds.
Right, if you get still under.
Still.
If they've acquired it, have they not filed a deed?
I don't know.
Don't know.
Because assessment records do not get updated for several months.
Right.
The court records on the, they're, they're up there within a couple of days.
We got that L O, okay, search?
No, that's, no, it's the loving county court clerk record, oh yes, okay county. I have a personal account on it.
Well, that was two, that was two nights ago.
Yeah.
And the way it went fast.
Well.
We didn't, we didn't know that stuff.
But here.
You know, a single notice on something like this, it's a house hazard.
Yeah.
And I think we've got to get it fixed, and we've gotta send them a bill.
We don't fix it.
We don't fix it?
No. That's why I said, that's why the problem.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, we don't pay the bad.
But you contacted them.
Yes.
And you called DEQ.
Called DEQ, okay, okay, he just gave us the answer, we called DEQ.
Yep.
And get them out there. But we've got to get it done tomorrow.
They've got another resource to find out who owns it and send out nasty grant, why don't we let them do it?
Well, I'm just saying, we cannot let that sit.
Yeah, you need pictures, you need to document and put pictures on to where you're doing it.
Yeah, what we do, if we have a problem like that, and we notify them and it's not taken care of, we shut the water off.
But it's not gonna matter.
Yeah, that's.
Well, there's still gotta be water coming from somewhere.
I think it's coming from the house next door, cause then the whole house, we all be all lying together.
Then if that's where it's coming from, you shut the water off.
Trouble, yeah.
Is that where you shut the water off to the house next door that has nothing to do with that other block?
If it's going into that line.
It's got a lot to do with it.
It's got all, everything to do with it.
They didn't know how they bought the house.
That doesn't matter.
Not, 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 just trying to figure out the logic here.
Well, if DEQ figured this out, guys, but they've got to be contacted immediately.
I'm just saying, that's what we, if we contact whoever and we can't, they don't do anything, we shut the water off, we're gonna be.
If they're lying, if they're lying, then they're responsible.
No, 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 that's not, that's not what we're talking about, the house next door is a completely separate property. And if their water's running into that same line, because it's on the same line.
That's what I'm saying, they're, they're responsible.
No, no, no. This is private property where the line is.
It's that.
This is a property next door that has nothing to do with this property, other than their water coming in the same line.
The house is running down that line, should be tapped.
But if those two houses were tied together.
They shouldn't be tied together.
They should never be tied together, so that is whoever's house that's still there, that is their lawn. And they are responsible.
Their need to be tapped directly into our sewer line, not into somebody else's.
Well, yeah, no, I didn't catch the dual town.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what I, I, yes.
But I'm just sitting there going, okay, wait, hold on, we're gonna pin line this house right here, protect their water.
You can talk about the water bill, the sewage bill, what's going on too, probably.
No, we can't, because they've got enough water.
Oh, okay.
But never.
But yeah, no, the way to measure sewer job, but.
I need to come here.
So, if you, if you call tomorrow, get them out there.
That's good, that's easy, easier.
Is, anything else?
I'm sorry, guys.
Uh, what, what are we on again?
Court, sir.
I think we're good.
Okay, uh, where we at on, on sending these letters out and stuff? I haven't signed any up yet.
What, what, rabbit, any additional letters about the first room?
No.
Uh, cause there's, there's promptly this town, it needs to be cleaned up bad.
Yeah.
And we just need to make a list, and we can start, um, yeah, whatever.
There should've been a list made for long as been.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's, you know, we, it didn't get done, they're gonna be, be sitting there waiting on stuff. Uh, there, there it is, coming in winter time, they should be had people mowing along down there. They're not doing. We got the house down here, that tree, it's been there all the way along, but they stepped off. We got grass halfway on the house. That's a fiery hazard.
We do.
You know, it's, it needs, you know, it should've been took care of long time ago. That's what I'm getting at, it's not sent to a lake like we are.
As, as far as this month is, I'd, I'd like to bet at least on his behalf, this hasn't been a short month, and he's, we've got a lot of stuff going on, getting things done up for years and all that, the way he's been busting his hop on, so this month anyway, he did have a bunch last month that were sent out, this month he hasn't, he hasn't a whole of the time on that for this, so. But not take away, but now we're going into the colder months.
Well, we're going to have a DEQ session here shortly, and perhaps I'll tell me, just maybe we'll discuss all of this, okay?
Okay. Is that all you got? There we go.
Yeah. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we have a cat issue.
Cat issue?
Yeah. Every one.
I gotta do it, I just take care of that one.
Yeah, Mr. Doom was, his cat's, yeah, we had a complaint filed, so, yeah, that's about it.
All right. Where's your man, but, uh, our control loss on our side up here is, we're falling off the.
Does that mean we have a ditch?
Um, that, it's, the board behind is rotten out. Been there so long.
Need to get a lift, to get somebody?
No, it's, it's right here, it's good, uh, topped away, he said he'd like to take care of it, he thought he had a piece.
They got a frame down here, a metal frame, yeah, that might work.
Probably got to put, piece of wood, metal coming out, bolted together, that's the screws out. You know, all of it, get rid of the wood.
Uh, that's something too, that we could possibly file, try to get a, uh, hazard mitigation grant on that covers that as well. And, uh, the N seventy five twenty five, if we can get a new pole, uh, donated to us, that could cover the twenty five percent cost. So, and that does, so we wouldn't actually have any money coming out of our pocket. Um, that would be something that, uh, something we looked into last time, when we had a bunch of other stuff going on, put it on the back line. Now that hazard mitigation grant is available.
It would be nice, no, set that thing off, that has to be got there, you could.
Well, that's, Langston is doing, uh, guys are doing, Langston's talking to me about that, uh, county side. Uh, possibly going in and getting a radio control that they might talk about, uh, the University of Town Langston, and trying to foil down the radio control that we hit all, uh, all three areas at one time. That may be something else that I'm talking about, and we cover a part of the cost instead of the whole cost. But that may be just a thought, my idea, I'm not, I haven't talked about it much, but.
Oh, they hit me up about they're trying to get my manager for all three, two.
John?
But that's, I just said, that, that, that gonna be an issue that's gonna have to take everybody, I don't think, getting involved.
Right.
Because, right now, our town's working out everything on that, on emergency side.
Yeah, yeah.
Vehicle, everything. So, they're involved, they're gonna have to, everybody has to pay something, and they're not gonna wanna pay, I'm gonna tell you that, right? They're not gonna wanna pay.
Well, the emergency may be a little bit different situation on that, uh, I've been, I've been dealing with the emergency a little bit for the county side. So that may be a different situation now.
Cause I don't have a problem there, it just take out, cause all it is, is, you guys work on, yeah, I usually have them anyway, those come in or not.
Right.
Cause they don't, they don't really know.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's something that, that come my way as well.
We've got the guys, the ladies watching down.
Yeah, so, do you have a radio, we can show for all three towns?
They got your radio, do they have a radio?
Well, it's, it's a different system, but it's, it's all VHF and, and the radios that we all agree, anyone can give you program to do that. That's, that's a small detail.
Something else, I'm just saying, we need to get some, we need ATX radios, we got eight hundred, but we don't have no VHF, we just one, it's part of.
Well, I would, uh, I would encourage you to think about, that, that may be a possibility to save some cost to the town, if we all agree going together on that. That might be a discussion.
Well, that's what I said, that would be, I think, that would have to take.
Oh, yeah, no, it definitely, it'd have to fund it all the way across.
But it, it's gonna, I guarantee you, there's gonna be a problem there, cause they're not gonna wanna pay.
Well, so.
A lot of stuff.
Now, Langston is also part of hazard mitigation property. So, we went and we were as well, if that's something that we could go, both of us could use hazard mitigation grant funds. Uh, problem is the university had a problem.
Cause I'm saying, whenever you got one department here.
Yeah.
Going across. And our city or, or another, you know, our area.
Right.
And they're not sharing in the cost.
That's, I, I'm suggesting that they have the ability to share the cost in ways that it won't actually cost either town too much, and that would help to kind of niche them and, and build a cooperative.
Matter of fact, I would love to have, if I had somebody each area that I can get ahold of. And say, hey, you know, we need to do this or that. We got, just, they can be watching on the other side of the lane and.
Yeah.
For stuff.
Yeah.
Or I, I can't see them up around here, I would, we're got, I got the guy sitting there, it's smooth.
Yeah.
Watching.
Half the time I'm out there, yeah.
And, and I got another guy sitting somewhere else, and if I got fire department, I'm just very something to have, I got all those guys here.
Well, you also got the county guy, his fault sitting all over the place.
But the county is, is taking care of county.
Well.
And that's.
I'm part of that, and I take care of this area and port town, I mean, so we, we can absolutely coordinate, that's something I highly recommend, which is down with, with ours would be. Coordinate some kind of meeting to.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem, but it's, it's up to you all, you all think we should do, if we wanna try to prove, go, go together in this, I'm all for it.
Well, but it may not make it easier on me. It may not make any sense at the end of the day to do that. But it might, I, I would, I have, from my standpoint, I would highly recommend that that conversation be had. Just to try to figure out whether or not it actually does make sense financially, if it makes sense, if it's even feasible to do. Uh, I know Langston has got a number of firefighters, but also fundraisers and front watchers. So, resources and assets are there, provided coordinated communications, and they've done a lot with. So, it's doable, I just, I, I strongly, I, I highly request that you'd, uh, at least you don't have a conversation through what may be available.
Is there an emergency manager for Langston?
For the town of Langston, no, for Langston University, it's, uh, the, uh, police chief. He is not really artsy manager, doesn't really want anything to do with it, but he's been. One of those by the, blessed off by the, uh, university, that he's gonna be the guy that's responsible for it, so.
That ring on me.
He, he relies heavily on county management.
Is this something where he has established a special meeting with this three of us?
Uh.
Before you reach out?
Or I have to have the okay to reach out to that, to that, to those interns, interns.
I, I think. I, I think, I think we went back through the previous minutes and what we've done the last two years, reestablishing emergency management of the town. The board is already blessed off on making those connections and that, that mutual aid. I don't have a problem with you going over and talking to them, I don't know that we necessarily have that as a board. Signing off for bless off, if you have one in special, maybe you can vote on that, that's fine too, but I think just to have a conversation, to see where we're at with the temperature of waters, I got the problem.
I'll, I'll just say.
That would take.
Yeah, and then we could have a, a meeting of what they could, like, have the ability to be a full partner.
There you go. Yeah, sound really quiet, man.
All right.
Yes, they do.
And I got Smiths.
I saw that here, they got a lot more people than we do.
And I got Smiths.
Oh, uh, the, putting up the emergency management conference, we signed up for the. Cover the conference.
Okay, I've got that under near business, 'cause it came from my email this morning, I was just.
Couple weeks ago now.
Okay, so it's needed, you got the N O I already, already submitted?
Yeah, we submitted the other day.
Perfect.
We had, have it in at the last.
It's got to be in by November twenty-third, so, good.
Yeah, we got it, got that, seen it. Ever get all my, you know, emergency management account, I can't get in the Z yet. So I need, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Are you forwarding them to him or something?
Any that I saw that were important, I tried to.
Important, that's, that all should be said to them.
Well, I will be shaking it now, so it's.
Oh, it gets, here comes tomorrow, I personally, I'll have.
Right.
Or, I, just hope I get hold of one person to get, help it change or whatever, 'cause it's, it's causing problems, it's also, I possibly know that, know the dialogue, I'm not giving it.
So we're gonna feel out Langston.
I'll, if I send you any emergency treatment. Okay, I think it's a.
It's a bit of a hangover for you?
Yeah.
A long one. Possible executive session to discuss the official resignation of Kevin Fortney, discussion of possible approval to increase salaries, oh, hours away, discussion and salary. Anyway, we need to go, we got a lot of things to go ahead and talk about on personnel. If there's a, be a motion to, for us to adjourn to the executive session to discuss personnel hours paid, etc.
I might move more down to the rear position.
All right.
Don't get old. The sentence is very beautiful, this is.
Boy, we just can't suit that kid.
Get the, yeah, you gonna be home tomorrow morning?
Yes.
I'm, I'm making notes.
Now, what are you wanting, the rims?
Well, I wanna look at them.
Well, they're just your truck rims, yeah, I don't know what they are, there's two that are just holes, you know, like the inside hubs, I don't. Then two that have the, and you're.
Heavy as hell.
How are you?
Do you, y'all go to the doctor or you?
I'm waiting on, I'm gonna just call me, just have one, yeah, she's around, yeah.
They're popping surgery, they're back surgery, oh my god.
I'll cut the surgery.
They're taking four burgers out.
That don't even sound.
Disks, discs.
Yeah, that don't even sound good.
Vurge your bones.
Hell, not as well.
They should be. They'd shorten you down about this far.
Well, you need to be shorter.
Don't bet them cement there and kinda. But what time do y'all, y'all, you up and around?
All nineish, whatever, you know, I don't get up early really, well, I can.
Right.
We choose not to.
I don't get kicking till about ten, start working.
You just come, holler when you come, you got my number, don't you?
Uh, I probably have it, it's probably on my phone, but I don't have it in me. I'll put it right here.
Okay. Oh, look at that.
But.
Brand new skin.
Oh yeah? It has more than eight holes around the rim.
Piece of ripper.
Yeah, they do, they have protection. But yeah, if it's over eight holes in it, or less than eight holes, then I can't.
Oh, believe me?
But I need some, well, I currently have seven and a half, seventeen and a half inch rims. I wanna swap those out, 'cause it's hard to find tires with the half inch.
These have been in Florida forever. They've been here so long, tires. Little biased tires.
Are they, they semi tires?
Yes.
Yeah, they may be too big, but I love.
They're, they're big. I'd almost.
Yeah, I do.
Just gonna think I better twenty-four inch rim.
Oh, they won't work, period.
And where they gonna go on?
They're gonna go on a travel trailer, motor, motor.
Oh, no, no, they didn't fit that though.
Sixteen inch.
Yeah.
Eighteen inch.
I think my airstream are seventeens maybe, I guess.
Well, never mind then, but I may come by and drink coffee.
Oh, Saturday, I'm getting rid of them.
Oh, yeah?
Kurt, I wanna see her, but I have an appointment.
He's doing, he's doing fine, still coughing a little bit, but you won't go to the doctor?
Is she home during the day, or is she working?
No, next week she will, because she'll be out for Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, yeah, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, she'll be out, so, couple of reasons. Or she may, she tells me, when I told her you asked about her and all that, she said, well, I sure hate it, I haven't even get to your house or your house. Well, maybe you need to set up a time to go see her. Let's see. Pam's got good intentions, but sometimes.
I'll try to get Pam to come down, Mark keeps a pretty close eye on me.
I bet, you got a lot of issues, gotta be careful.
There is, you go on I thirty-five, go see, on the East Island Highway, there's a junkyard, my dear, thousands of motorhomes.
I went there today.
Yeah, it didn't happen.
They had some, but everything looks good, I'm questioning whether the rims will rub up against the drum of the vehicle, but the holes matched, everything. And there's sixteen, I think, inch rim.
But what's, what's on yours?
Seventeen and a half.
Well, the sixteen's, it won't rub.
Well, yeah, the, the rim.
Oh, wait, I deep, yeah, you'd have to measure from the outside of your rim to.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta measure that board.
Best way to do that, lay a board on top, and measure down to it. Probably need the board, tell you perfect or label or something.
So, but I had a problem today with it. So. Okay. But I'm trying to get some updated rims to where I can get tires wherever I might be.
See, there's a problem, Mark, that's an airstream, but, you know, the place you can get them, is from airstream.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Bolt power, I don't care, door lock, the door lock. Anything has to come to airstream where national Wisconsin, it's like fifty times the price, just the lock. The door lock, remember our door, the inside part, it broke. Three hundred ninety-nine.
Uh-uh.
Yes.
How hard is it? We got, get some rest.
Yeah, that's what we had, I tell you, with that one winter. We went out there, of course, there was accidents and anything, but there were the pogs. And just getting out there and try to.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, all the new stuff they've got now, what, you know, what people, you know, some of the, you know, you ever say that the water tank and stuff, they're all hit, you know, the paper car hit the rubber ones. You know, we've got, you know, we, we got the stuff sitting on concrete slides now, because they just go and dig out, dig out, dig out, you know, with the cows sit there. And so you have to have a entry and exit spot.
Yeah.
And so I have, we even have, uh, uh, you know, the six foot panels, chain with fence on each side, so they can only get through it through the front. And then I've got it shaded over the top, so it keeps it cooler in the summertime.
Yeah, oh, okay, gotcha.
So the water's cool.
Yeah.
They're perfect.
Yeah, they are. They are, yeah, well, every time I drive by and look at them, they just look at me and say, I'm so. They are, they look good.
Yeah, you just, you just want them, they know when, I mean, if they aren't getting enough food, they come to the corner and they just look at us, and they all stand there and go, where's my stuff?
That's right, that's right. That's what our horse did before, you know.
Yeah.
She would, she would always come up and look across the street at us.
And you know.
She knew that we saw her and she saw us.
And she'd say, okay, well, sit right here, do you get your fanny out?
Get over here. I loved it, it sounds great.
They're just.
Yeah, exactly. He won't cry, yeah.
You know, there's nobody in this, compared to what, if you just, you know, you gotta do something else.
Yeah.
But this is what.
Enjoy it.
He doesn't even know what to do, yeah. So, we're too old, we're.
Yeah, you don't do something like.
As long as we can break even, last year was not a break even number.
No, that was a, uh.
Drought.
Shorting, yeah.
Drought, hay, fertilizer.
Yeah, yeah.
Chemicals, all of these, but, was a nightmare.
It can be that way.
I've even spoiled the bull, but we dreamt, he's out there, you know, I had to, he got pinkeye, I would patch it, and then that came off, and then we had to get the stitch shut, and have the vet come out, and the vet and me and his tech stitching his eyes shut, but I had talked to him so much, and, and he was just a two year old, and so at first he was just scared to leave. You know, stomping around and doing whatever, now he sees me come with a bucket or whatever, he goes, let's take you home. Yeah, like you, you're still two thousand pounds, but.
Right across from him.
Yeah. He's so funny.
They do get attacked and, and cuss them and comfortable on the road.
And I talked to him, you know, I guess somebody else was talking to him.
They do like to be talked to, yeah. I talked to my dog and cat, they're human.
Me too.
And, uh, we have.
Oh.
What do you think of this war?
But I, they know exactly when, they know when I'm getting up, when I'm working, what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Uh, they know if I start working on something that.
I play up there when they show the.
One date, she knows when I'm getting up to making the bed, and the other one's on the bed, goes after her, get off the bed, mom's working, I'm dragging the boat, she goes after her, get out of her way. I mean, she's just like, she knows all of the kids and how and what, and if it's time to go to the farm, she comes over, she knows the time, she looks at me, goes, look at that, I like it, yeah. Sometimes she doesn't, sometimes she doesn't, so to say, the cows had pickpocket, I didn't want her over there. I didn't want her to come back and get on her, or me get on it and wipe my face, or.
Yeah.
Get her sick, or.
Exactly.
So she, she doesn't have, cause she doesn't, she makes her work, she's a worker doll, yeah, the other one's just, I call them dumb blonde.
Energetic, if you're taking her out with you.
Well, she goes with me, and if I go places, like if I get in the farm, like go to Smithy's or go somewhere, Kate goes with me, and, I mean, she wants to go, she wants to sit, and I'm sending Jimmy back and forth, picking up from school.
Yeah.
I take them both, they knew, they get the backseat, they know exactly what they're supposed to do, they wanna go, they just wanna go.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, and they're good protection, Kate's a real good protection.
Oh, yeah, they, they will.
Yeah, she will, she'll take somebody out.
Take care of you.
She'll take, she'll take somebody out, fine. She's a, and it's always scary to me, because she'll go to the bank. I need a cat, I got something sitting under my house, and it's moving around, and the crawl space, so we got slab, and we got crawl space.
Armadillos are good as pen.
They, it stinks, I've never had anything smell like, I mean, never recognized a smell before, and that's why I was talking to the, the farmers, the, my O H E group, the, the women on Sunday, you know. And that's what they said, it's either armadillo or opossum, and, um, 'cause, you know, it smells like something's dead, but it moves, it moves around, so it's not like the same smell. Going through my cabinets, I opened up my cabinets, you know? This, I can't figure out how they got in there.
I have one of those traps.
I've, I've got something like, that looks metal, yeah.
If you need it, you can borrow it from us, because we have a, and.
I've got a, I've got one that's about this big.
Mine.
Bigger. We took the deck out, so I heard it in, uh, so you got that?
Uh.
Where's the breefly, or the breefly?
Well.
Where the old house connects to the new house, where I've got glass sliding, eight foot.
Totally.
Sliding doors type things there. Uh, it's, it, the concrete starts, it starts and stops there. So, the bathtub, uh, when you go down the hallway, there's a bathtub, and I could hear the scratch, scratch, scratch underneath where the bathtub was. Here's the bathtub, and here's the, the, the stone tile, and so I could hear it, so I couldn't get it, so Jimmy had Jimmy take off carpet, uh, 'cause there's, you know, uh, vents, we have covers. Got open a door, so he took off the deck, and went where the vents were, I had him drop down a light, 'cause they're nocturnals, shined a light in there, then I went and built a radio, turned it on the. It's like on the star, just the door, I thought, you want to stay with the light, the noise? Well, I haven't worked like, but I've still got the sink down the other end, yeah, so, but it's narrow where down here where that, where it was, so I thought we could, it was going down there in daytime, and sleeping, but I couldn't smell it there. Or you smell it in there, but I can get the. Never, this helped me buckle, so you need to get somebody to get underneath that house.
We have the.
I have to pull the freezer out, and it's looking. Because that's where the crawl space is, is where the freezer is, I know it's pretty.
Oh, you do have a crawl space.
They go in right there, yeah. And that's where the.
That's what we have, uh, had in the.
Old house.
Yeah, the old house, and we stayed in that for a couple of years, we were, you know, building that sort of thing, but.
I think we, I stayed in the fifth wheel.
What?
I stayed in the fifth wheel right here.
Fifth wheel, yeah.
Uh, we're, 'cause I, yeah.
Yeah, it was up there all the way.
I don't know, it was colder than hell. Oh, god, it was colder than hell.
Yeah, I'll let her tell you the story.
I had electric, I had the electric plug in, Jimmy had the space here. And I had one dog, and he had another dog.
Yeah.
And it was, and I started my long underwear, hat on.
Yeah.
A coat on, and the block.
We.
And I was just like, it was kid, I just. You know, you just, it's what I did.
It is, uh.
He's, I just, I love you a lot, boy, you're serious.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we did the same thing.
Yeah.
Because that house is not insulated.
Yeah.
Well, they took the siding on it, and it had a little bit of insulation.
They don't like.
Some windows and everything.
All they do is block in the wind.
Yeah.
It's just blocking wind, it's just called, it's just called, I don't know what called this. You know, you're elevated off the ground, and the wind's blowing, and.
Exactly.
It's just called, it was, it was warm inside our house, 'cause we had heat inside the house, it was warmer in there, you know, it was really warm. It has to work and stuff, but it was colder than hell out in the, in the fifth wheel. Always warm and felt sorry for me, so.
Good.
I miss them.
When I, uh, the armadillos, who was right.
And they.
Unless they were under in the crawl space, so we could hear them. When they have their, uh, babies.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
They have four.
Okay.
Identical.
Oh, yeah.
Scientists, they like to have that, if you have identical, if you can experience, you know, that's why they, science likes those identical. Four, they have four.
Wow.
And you can see them come out, no. See the little ones coming out. We caught. One. And I tried to check, try to start the rest, and, uh, I said, "She's ready."
Well, it's hard, I mean, just, you know, it's just, I can't think, I can't think of anything.
They probably do some damage.
I'm worried about the damage we got next, underneath that part of the house.
Yeah.
Where we got, you know, we got some fell together, and we ran all that in that. And I just, I don't know what they'll do to the bathtub, I just don't know what they'll do to anything.
Yeah, yeah, they figured out where they're getting in.
I'm not figuring out where they're getting, because we got, yeah, so I think they dug right under something, because we got, so, that whole backside of our house is all dead.
Yeah.
And it's attached to the house, so they can dig underneath, so I've got fifteen, twenty, thirty feet somewhere, I don't know where it is, I don't find it.
That's right.
I'm afraid they dug, taken and dug in on the concrete site and gone down and under, and gone to that crawl space.
I was amazed at what they could do, because we first discovered where they were getting in. And there's a pretty big hole beside the house, so they go under the foundation and back up, saw through rocks in there. After a while, they're all back, all the, I mean, soft rock, trying to stop them. And, uh, if you go over down to that house, you'll see, you'll see that hole, that same hole, dug in. Couldn't stop them.
I don't see, I don't work them.
Little actual carvings in them, the gins laid in them, yeah.
I'm not gonna argue, uh, I'm gonna argue, uh, armadillo. Where did I go conversation? Dill, uh, dill. Under the slab. Okay, so they did, understanding being treated by identification. An armadillo burrow is seven to eight inches wide and up to fifteen feet deep. Armadillos will burrow under concrete slabs, endangering the stability of the slab by creating air pockets that may lead to cracks in the home foundation, no grave. They can damage trees by burrowing, find damage on the trees you want, they burrow, or. They are round shaped, banded shell, and most importantly, bear trouble. Armadillos are notorious for digging up yards and potentially damaging foundations. Okay, so I'm gonna look on the south side of the house and see what we've got going on. How can I fill, fill an armadillo burrow? After several days of noticeable disturbance, you can safely refill, of no noticeable disturbance, you can safely fill the hole with a mixture of earth and feed gravel, to make it harder to dig and open once again. How do I keep them from digging? Use an effective castor oil base repellent to drive the armadillos out or prevent them from digging for food on your property. Castor oil is an all-natural oil that accelerates the ground or kills armadillos in two ways. Foils the food source, which is insects and grubs, and the ground making them unpleasant to eat.
Yeah, well, you remember castor oil.
So, it says, yeah.
I took it when I was a kid.
Yeah, I did never take, I didn't hear the story. So what do they do under my slab? Most often seen these burrowing animals under, uh, concrete slabs, because chipmunks, mice, moles, and opossums. So they're going after their food source. What time of night do armadillos come out? Because they stay outside in the burrows when it's hot, and come out at dawn, dusk, or at night.
Well, yeah, I've seen them, because I just presumably am nocturnal with them.
How do you know? If it's long, it's not pressing for holes in your lawn, but if I dig, yeah, I've seen where they dig up stuff. But that's, that's confusing in a way. Then I'm going in a high plan, and I like those. How do you get rid of them? Eliminate the food source, get rid of the potential hiding place, install in-ground fencing, install electric fencing. Consider live trapping, which we do, employ regular pest control.
What's the bait on live trapping? Because I did that, and I can't remember what I used.
I don't know either, but. Do they have two entrances?
I put it right up against where they come out, so they don't go into it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I've done, for under that, when they come out, that's. Armadillos make their home in in-ground harbors and can use multiple entrances, and are lined with grasses and like. Ran. Okay, well. And I'm from Wisconsin tonight, too. So last night at two o'clock, I woke up, because I, I could smell it, and I'm on the slide area, and so I smelled it, then they didn't say anything. And almost immediately, Sydney the Grady Merle, uh, Aussie, she goes, "Rrrr, rrrr," like, the stink woke her up too. Like, who caught one in here, Mom? You know, she was on the ground, like, my bad, it's like, it upset her too.
Yeah, we have a cat at the time, and we didn't have a dog at the time. My cat would be a little bit, you know, saying everything. They're quick, yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're always active in very late hours in the hot summers.
Hot summers.
Uh-huh, summer hours that, success, using it, motion activate, that's another thing. I'm leaving the lights on in the backyard. At night, on, on at night. I'm leaving the light on in the garage. I'm just waiting, you know? My center thing else, they like nocturnal.
Yeah. Well, we have a, uh, we have one bad man. Same location, but you're over at the White House, that's where they live, you know, underneath that floor.
So, they have unique preference for food, they like worms, they like grub, and they like rotten food. Yeah, I knew they liked the grubs, but I didn't know they liked rotten food.
Yeah. What kind of food?
Rotten.
Rotten.
Rotten food. Down here, it was my fault, I'm vulnerable, that, that smelled of the butter. I would say not if you like rotten food. Who is a natural predator, coyotes.
Right.
Bobcat, or predator of armadillos, followed by bobcats, cougars, wolves, bears, raccoons. Well, I don't mind if they're bears, wolves, or cougars, or bobcats, but they saw, see some bobcats like this around here. In the area, that's scary.
Yeah, meet people, that's twice we got in place with them. One of the ladies that lives in Perkins.
Do you go where do they play, they play Stillwater, Oklahoma City, they play pickleball?
Stillwater, uh.
Okay.
The, uh, Stillwaters, health clinic, the toenail clinic. And, uh, we have a group of people over.
Did you, yeah, I've got friends that play up on the city. Yeah, I, no, I didn't, I've got friends that play up on the city, and, uh. Oh, my sister-in-law, uh, she's in Houston, uh, Carl Dobson, which is my brother-in-law. And, and Georgia was from here, and Vancouver is. So she plays pickleball three or four, five times a week.
Also, with his dad, we have a reserve spot from ten to twelve, two hour reserve. We have, like, sixteen, yeah, hundred group, and we, uh.
Sign up, so that you sign up, or you go beyond, or you're playing.
Yeah, yeah, we have a, kind of a, a person that, the leader in the group, and he signs up, and we make sure that we have ten to twelve. And one, yeah, one course is all the guys.
One course, but the court's full, so everybody, you know, so you got.
Yeah, but sometimes we'll have four show up, sometimes we'll have six show up. So, you know, people don't just go there every day, or there's some that are there about every day. I have Sue, is one of the ladies. She's a lot better than I did. She plays pickleball.
Well, she likes it, so you have to do it. She has on the couch.
Yeah, she's pretty good, too.
Yep, like it.
Say maybe.
Yeah, you get, if you're, uh, I can't do any of that stuff, I want her to see that snowsweat, that rain, you know? I did all kinds of, I played tennis, I did all, so many things, you know? You know, I spare foot, I do, see, I did all kinds of stuff.
You can do that.
I beat that a lot of it, plus work, you know?
I had to replace this knee.
I got a bug, bug in my wrist, like.
Yeah, do you?
Mm-hmm, both knees replaced, shoulders are all got worked on, ripped it, or ankles are down, spine, neck's fused all up, everything. Hands, joints have been replaced. I've got genetic problems.
Yeah, I have.
Someone slows me down.
Anyway, she was from Perkins, and lived in Perkins, and pretty close to the Semarong River, and that's, they, they.
Yeah, on the back, on the south, yeah, because it's on the south of town.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty over there.
Yeah, mountain lion. She actually spotted them, and she had another.
Because they, they're quiet, they're quiet, because when you're on the mountain, Colorado, they don't make any noise.
No, they don't.
They're scared, they're scared, they're, they're scared of bears.
But then she had a friend in Perkins that spotted with two kittens, cubs, or whatever they call them. So, they kind of established the territory there, and they found, uh, they spotted a lot in Stillwater just recently. They love that Semarong River, they can come out of, uh, New Mexico, Semarong River, follow that stream, there are so many deer here.
Well, yeah, because I've had them going, I've watched them go across my bathroom, my vanity room.
Yeah.
Because I, Soldier Creek is there, and they're, they're taking that creek all the way in, and then it dumps into the Semarong.
And, so, beware anyway, because they're, we did spot them over there.
That's, no, that means they're, they're close.
One oh five, uh, about eight years ago, just spotted them.
They're, they're, you know, the old home place.
Pardon?
Our old home place, the old home place.
Yeah.
The mile section south of that.
Yeah.
Back in the early eighties.
Yeah.
There was two down there, a pair, in, you know, you get that big canyon back in there?
Yeah.
And they stayed in there, because we'd lose two calves a year, they'd weigh till they were about two hundred pounds.
And go get them.
And we'd lose two a year, that's all.
Yeah.
They'd never bother the horses that we had down there.
Interesting.
But we finally got to where, a certain time of year, we'd move the cattle off.
Yeah.
And.
We had a coyote a couple of years ago get a, uh, one of our calves.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a cow.
I mean, that warden saw him and shot him, and went to Jim Friedenberger and said, "Do you think this was okay shooting?" The, Jimmy says, "Yeah," Jim Friedenberger says, "Yeah," Jim knows it'll be just fine if you shoot them. And we just had two beavers, seventy-pound beavers, yeah, that were Soldier Creek and, you know, Triple X, so. They had, they were, they're cutting down trees, you can see where they're cutting down trees, because I keep that spot on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have.
And, and so, the first one that fell down was not where it's going, and was into the clear spot, and I thought, come on, if I picked that up and cut it up, it'd move. And then pretty soon, it, it's been windy, so pretty soon it started kind of moving, and I thought, can it blow that much? Because they started the top and started cutting it down, and turn it off. And then the next one fell, it was about this big around, the tree was maybe, maybe bigger, and it looked like this, and I looked out and went, "Is it?" So I went over there and I thought, "That's suckers of beavers," so then we called. And he said, "The biggest ones he's ever gotten," he's had a kingfisher, I don't remember his name, it's Jimmy talked to him, the guy.
We have a couple of dams over here on this, little, we're calling it.
But there's a bunch up on down Soldier Creek, he said.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, beaver dams.
Yeah, beaver dams, yeah, probably. They have to, they have to, uh, to, they have to.
To sharpen the teeth.
Grow them, so, yeah, they're, uh, they're pretty busy, busy beavers.
Busy beavers.
Isn't that what they call them?
Yeah.
Busy beavers.
They're like rabbits, frogs, those squirrels, and other small game, yeah, they're like cows, dude. Or bobcats, and, I'm not saying about Logan County.
It's up there, and then over on, uh, across the river. You know where Cottonwood is?
No, just.
Thirty-three.
Yeah, what is this?
The road?
Yeah. Cottonwood Road, up at thirty-three.
Yeah, how far, how much farther is it from, like, you go past what I call the marijuana spot in Francisville Wood? Cottonwood's farther.
Be, you know, where Bentley and Son used to be.
The reflection.
No, my husband, my husband Jimmy would know, not, but from me, because I've only been here nine years, and so it steps moving all the time.
Um, anyway, from Saint Francis.
Is it a mile?
Oh, it's, uh.
Cottonwood.
Two, three, four miles.
Four miles, okay.
I believe, three or four.
Three or four, okay, that gets me a reference of that, it's after Western?
No, it's.
Before Western, okay, it's before Western, okay.
So, you go all the way south to the river, and we used to have like five hundred and some acres all along that river. And had a guy that used to come up, what Wade does, pictures.
Take pictures, yeah.
He, he had stands up, deer stand, three stands.
Yeah, three stands, you used to take pictures.
And he, yeah, and he had pictures of at least two different ones, because one was black and one was painted. And their tails was as long as their backs.
Wow.
And that was back in the early eighties.
Wow.
Yeah, I chased them on my motorcycle.
Picture of a bear over there, too.
Yeah, there's some old men down here, off the river, this other side of Getthee, down towards that plant, that sand plant. Those old guys there said they could see bear tracks in their fields all the time.
Yeah.
And, long, long time ago, a cub got run over at Seventy-four Bridge.
Really?
Yeah.
Little brown bear?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what people, this was over there.
Black bear, I don't know. Well, they're starting to come back in to Oklahoma, like, southeastern, I think.
Yeah.
And, and I would get your.
Northeastern, maybe.
Well, when, um, uh, Dutch bought all of that property off, cleared it all off, south, uh, Semarong there, on Triple X Road, then all the wildlife changed. Now I've got all the rabbits in my yard, you know, and they're digging underneath, I've got every creature in the whole world, it just, in one day's time, they didn't have any place else to go, so they're coming over to that, the school property where it hasn't been maintained. So where I live, I live at Bond, in the Triple X, in a white house. So if you go down there at night.
Martha Dobson's?
Yeah, she's my mother-in-law, yeah, my, yeah.
Okay, I grew up here.
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah.
We used to live, go to, uh, what is that now?
Pass Jills?
County Road, yeah, Pass Jills, and up on top of the next hill.
Oh, wow, okay, because we used to, because I would go some with them, and we'd go to the poor farm, because you'd take that corner down like this and take the next road out. Because we had a hundred sixty acres over there, too.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, uh, yeah.
Where you used to go down to make that corner, all that was, north, on the north side, it was all school land, and then there's Joe Inn. Where you used to go down to make that corner, all that was, north, on the north side was all school land, and then there's Jill Inns, and Uncle Elbers and all that land is theirs.
Yeah.
Still is.
Yeah.
The families.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah, and we had, there, we had a half section that voted up to Dobson's. And then the back half was, uh, wow, I can't even remember. What their name was. A black family, and I cannot think of their name right now. Actually, we had more than that, because in the middle, we had a eighty that was in the middle behind Dobson's. And north of that. Stig's got a lunges now.
Okay. We, yeah, the, because it was my, it was Jimmy's grandfather that bought all that land originally, and then he gave it to his sons, which would have been my father-in-law, of course, which. I've only been married to Jimmy thirty-seven years, so he died in, you know, he died in fifty-two, fifty-four years old, so. My, Martha was sixty-eight when I married Jimmy, so she's over. And, uh, but I had been with through here, because I had came from, my mother started family with Disney.
Oh, okay.
So when I met Jimmy, so James Disney, who's now, but, and Donna, Pete, but, uh, I didn't, you know, I was, you know, a young kid. But when I met Jimmy, I met him at church in Oklahoma City, and, uh, and he said it was on Foil, and I said, and he said, you probably don't know where it is, it's in Jersey. I was, I was a city girl, but I was living in Norman, I mean, the dad liked that. So, yeah, I'm exactly where that is, blah, 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 and he's like, whoa! Well, pretty much. So he took me on dates, we went hiking through the pasture, through the pecan grove, and all that kind of stuff, and I loved that.
Yeah.
That was fun for me, but I grew up doing that as a little kid, most kids, you know. Yeah, Junior League in Oklahoma City, and I'm like, those pastures.
It's right here, if you ever want to read it.
We had more fun than you guys, we were recounting bobcats.
Oh, because the lives are.
Bears.
Yeah.
And armadillos.
I think you have to read it here, though, where they don't check out anything.
Well, I've got a backpack.
You gotta get quiet, we're getting trouble.
I didn't know they were back.
We, uh, got, took Kevin's resignation, verbal, to go in. And on the rest of the stuff, there's no action taken, few differences of opinion.
Well, until we contact the attorney. We do need to make a motion that we contact the attorney. I make a motion that we contact the attorney.
Second, I want you.
Hold on, third.
Aye.
Aye. Next thing on here is, is, let me see.
No business?
No, just, yeah.
Yeah, like, actually, they're not serious.
Okay. No business.
The only thing I have is the conflict thing.
My phone.
They're fine, they have a little noise going on over in the corner here.
Not me. Any call, more trusty, meaning the public, for eight, to order eight fifty-eight. Call.
Fifty-nine.
Yep.
Fifty-nine, yes, mayor.
Yep. I can guess, is there anything I want to say about the, and it's on the agenda, they have three minutes. This is on the agenda.
Maybe I'll make the motion, I'll strike, I have, who's consent agenda, uh, in favor of, uh, special session.
I second it.
Call on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Business agenda.
I can make one more, I make a motion except to consent to agenda.
Okay.
As many, as.
As many.
As many as by three minutes, I don't care.
A second.
Hold on, third.
Aye.
Aye. Business agenda. Discussion room, possible action, human, diamond mapping, and weather base system, seventy-two dollars annually.
What does that give us, this thing?
Is that what this page is for?
Yes, that's a screenshot of the map, which right now, we just have our sewer on it, but it can map, do you want to talk about it? It can map our sewers.
Your screenshot is your mystery group.
Um, so all of our manholes, sewer lines, water lines, water meters, they have all information on it, any work orders that are done, everything's on this, it's a cloud-based system. We can have as many logins, like Wade can have a login, and it'll show who, who creates the maps. Um, well, so this I did based off of our sewer map that we have, it was really quick and easy. Now, I don't have all.
You put points with all lines?
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, Oklahoma Water Association can kind of help GPS, like the water meters, which I think will be helpful in the long run. The sewer was pretty easy, because you can kind of see the manholes, but, like the sewer cavity replacement at the school, we can put the date that it was installed, and it has a ton of information on it all right here. And it's seventy-two dollars annually, and that's, I, I, yeah.
All right.
I can, I, I make a motion that we.
Second.
Hold on, third.
All right.
All right.
Okay, if there's a possible rule of Jayhawk personnel to answer the question, I think.
That's what we already done, in the meeting.
So, I make a motion that we.
Do we need to find that page?
No, well, it's on here, um.
Make the motion, I'll take it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we provide Jayhawk needed information to the state office.
That's already done, seconded.
And the general.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Uh, water report, uh, needed red, uh, weekly, monthly water testing done, over here. Still some needed water?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, not a couple days, but.
Yeah.
Any water leaks?
Just one at the school.
What has, what else has been done to it?
Just the setter, it's not.
Is that the meter? Is that the meter, the setter?
Yeah.
Do you have a comment?
I'm just, I'm wondering after he gets done, but guys, if you think you're going to need some stuff, which you don't keep the quantity that we do, yeah. I was sold eight to nine months on setters. And I've got two housing additions going in that I'm going to need, I mean, they're not going to go all at once, but, so I'm ordering, I mean, I'm, I'm going to need three hundred setters.
But it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us to order ten.
Um, any brass?
Yeah.
fittings for your poly lines, whatever, prepared, idle or something.
Uh, can y'all put that on a special meeting, y'all might discuss that in special meeting as well.
I'm just putting it out there, because this is what I'm.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
It's starting, I don't know why it got better there for a little bit, and now it's.
Um, I have noticed the water pressure has dropped just a little bit.
Cooler.
They ain't cooler weather, but paid you're also a little bit harder than that, so.
Yeah, I have, I'm sure you can tell us.
Probably everywhere. Water pressure's always low, too, especially if she's watering plants sometime. Excuse me, her husband's watering plants sometime. Oh, I hear watering, that's it, right.
Let them all know that stuff is big, having harder, but yet, again.
Good, thank you.
You got a place?
Uh, you got a couple things fixed, the water leak over here?
Yeah, we have the main line fixed, and the one on Iowa fixed, yeah. Is it fresh water report? Uh, of course, I tend to be O-MAG sewer expert, I want a real nice high shed. The sludge, Judge, turned out excellent.
Can you elaborate a little bit on excellent, that was kind of a big conversation, my point.
And we averaged about maybe a foot of sludge and put on. A lot of places at five inches, six inches, some places it was a foot and a half, so.
I don't understand them at all after forty.
Yeah, they're saying that everything's working. Sixty-six.
That there's not, not much sludge.
They said everything is working like it's supposed to.
Okay, well, that will impact the ACOG grant if we happen to get it.
Well, I did call Jason and talk to him about it.
I'm just kind of sharing here.
Yeah.
But, two and three, three and two, whichever you count them, they're still not leveling.
Right.
So, we're not going to know if we got any grant money until January, someone said. I think that probably read in that packet, is what they were, but we need to be thinking about, if they say deducted full grant including sludge. There's a huge possibility that we can divert the funds, because it's the same logo, it's the same project, to try to figure out why we, those ponds aren't leveling. Why we can't get our three-foot free board that we're supposed to have.
We could probably get it on the middle pond, but the top pond being as it was built later, that may be the issue, it was built a little different, I don't know.
I don't know either, but we may have to do some.
And we also need to talk to us everything out there to bring it back up to original height, because erosion and compaction have happened.
I know, it's, it's, well, every time we've had to pull in a, we had to go to Oklahoma City and get a big pump to keep it from topping, it's eroding. And that's happened twice in the last six years. And that's why we've got to keep the levels.
I'm afraid we can get that wrapped in a picture.
I don't know, but be thinking about it, if we need to get an engineer in here to see what needs to be done.
Sorry, wait.
If it needs to be talked, if it needs to be.
I, I think, I would, Jason, Jason ran this, he talked to the folks over at ACOG, and I would be interested to know if there's wiggle room in there, since what we assumed was the case wasn't.
If there is, is what I'm trying to tell you.
So there is wiggle room there.
He leaves, there is. But let's, and he's contacted them and told them that we did not have any sludge from the sludge pit, that we're going to have to level it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean.
That it's, it's where it's supposed to be, and we're running it, and so we don't have the need that we originally hoped we did.
Right, but that we're not leveling.
Okay.
And that's just been verbal.
Okay.
But as, we wouldn't have been able to respond to this last thing as quickly, had we not done previous analysis, got bids, and then trying to identify our problems. So we were able to document them, and we know the motors and this and that and everything else. So, I would like to add this to the special meeting of, what do we need, what can we do without contracting an, an engineer? Is there any, you know, can we get Myers out here, can we do the last drawings, the drawings the last time?
Hey, Myers has nothing on this place.
What do you mean?
Two, two years ago, their computers went down.
Yeah, well, we got all of our, we've got all of the.
We've got all the maps.
Yeah, that's.
But they don't have any information, they don't have the guide, or drew it up, anything.
But we have the maps, they have something to start on, they know what the elevations are supposed to be. They will know if the levees are this tall, as they should be, if they're missing two foot, or five foot, or two inches, they will know that from all the drawings we have.
Yeah, um, there's, we talked about this before, there's grants out there for, for the, the precursor to a project grant, uh, the, the name of it.
Planning grant, well, maybe a plan.
A planning grant.
I'm just saying.
So we get engineers and whatnot, yeah.
But maybe it's just a matter of asking somebody.
Verbal could be, yeah, verbal could be.
Calling up Myers, we've got their drawings, I don't care what that, I know what we have.
Right.
And we have the plans, and they'll research like the D E Q.
Well, it doesn't hurt anything to call them up and ask if they'd be willing to come out and just look at it, without charging us.
I'm sure they would, because there's a potential job there, it's called marketing.
Right.
Um, we don't have to get terribly in depth, but before, we can sit down with them and tell them what's happening. They can look at plans, I don't understand their plans, they understand their plans, and maybe they could tell us where the pipes are.
Or what kind of pipe it is, and why it would be.
And after fifty years, is the pipe still there or not? Which is a possibility, that it's not.
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe that's how we solve the problem, is new piping, and that's what we would be ready to put into our grant, if we get the money, in January, we say, hey, look, we got it, this is what's recommended.
But they can come in and tell us what, make out the tails of those plans for us, and try to figure out where we're at on things, coming back to ACOG and saying, hey, okay, we're not going to be just like we thought.
Because, we thought the sludge was stopping our leveling, that is what we thought, the sludge was, the pipes are down there, fogging the pipes, and stopping the.
And that's reasonable, that's reasonable.
So it's not a pretending project, we're still trying to figure out why our ponds aren't leveling, and therefore, eroding the levees.
Yeah, I, if we get that done pretty quick, if they'd be willing to come out, that'd be, uh, still ready to sort it, moving forward.
So, anyway, that's just my comment, because I know what's coming, and maybe between now and, I'm still hoping, and we need to know.
Yeah.
But I don't want to stay long, Mike. So, you want to call Myers, maybe?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, us update on cops and repairs, replacing check valves, irrigation pump.
Has that changed since when we've submitted the ACOG?
No, it hasn't, it was just left on here because it hadn't been moved, and I know we added it to the, the grants, so.
Okay, um.
Take it off of here.
Yeah, those are the grants I'd make a motion, we're, remember those two?
Yes, until further, can we have.
Yes, until further, until January, it's not gonna, we'll be fine till January. We'll know whether we come or not.
Yeah, so, seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is-
Um, I guess this could be on here. I know Carl, you and I talked about trash services, it seems that they're better. You're, I mean, yours got picked up, right?
Yeah, they're getting, they're cleaning out now.
We've, I've been talking with our municipal rep and so we're working on getting that fixed and making sure we leave trash with it though. If people don't get picked up and they reach out to you, you'll let me know with an address because that's what I need to say to the public, so.
Thanks for the information.
I'll tell you what, guys, that's something we need to keep a pretty close eye on. You know, we went through all that crap to get the contract with Langston so that we'd have something. Okay, we'll hopefully get something better than we had previously.
Well, all right, it might go up.
Waste didn't go up and had a time where everything's going up, that was a win.
The problem is right now is, is everybody we talked to is gone. And you-
Well, within a week and the next one, then two weeks, the, uh, two months, they told us, oh, we're not going anywhere, yeah. So same old crap we've had to deal with, not much has changed except for the first couple of months of that contract, we can't get our trash all picked up.
Can I make a motion to adjourn on that matter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine fourteen.
Okay.
Please tell me which one, which place, and I'm like-
Call this agenda that, uh, full of educational facility trust.
Nine fourteen.
Call it later, no. Jase, roll call.
F C Neil.
Yep.
F C Neil, here, Neil on.
Here. Same thing, everybody, they, they, it's on their general opponent, please stop three minutes now. This is agenda. Discussion house for action and acceptance engagement letter for Mitch W Green, CPA.
If you don't mind, um, we've got, have you been here?
I didn't ever see a copy of it. Um, seventeen, and, I'm sorry.
I didn't bring my computer.
What were you doing in the day before?
Getting the schools, the bonds audited.
Oh, finally.
Okay.
This is the one with the honey side four, we've been waiting on and-
And I'll bring it today, so- Having a good superintendent that understands this has been extremely helpful.
Agreed.
So, number one, uh, the school, uh, reached the superintendent has, understands their legal obligation to pay for any shortfalls on these audits.
Okay.
Of subtly, they understand that.
We discussed the difference in price between fifteen years ago and now.
Which is irrelevant because in total, we only got fourteen thousand to start with. Regardless of when, where, whatever, it's ridiculous. Had they been done, these bills would have been going out.
Okay.
And, but actually, we have news. We have set aside fourteen thousand... It's almost fifteen thousand, I think. True?
Fourteen thousand, seven ninety.
Okay, fourteen thousand, seven ninety in our bank account. When bank first closed all of the accounts related to this bond issue, it was fourteen thousand... What did we send the invoice for? About the same amount.
Uh, fourteen thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four ninety.
Another fourteen thousand, seven hundred. That adds to thirty thousand dollars. Well, almost, it's short.
No, we'll give you thirty dollars if you're rushing.
All right, the estimate is between thirty-five and forty-two thou-
I don't know.
Okay, it's between thirty-five and forty-two thousand, including expenses. And the twelve, the one hundred dollar per year fund fee, it's bank auditor cost, which will be twelve hundred dollars, because there will be twelve years then. And Mr. Hagel is fully aware of this cost. He is fully aware that I have placed this on this agenda. And I would like to make a motion that we accept this engagement letter to do the twelve years, it will be between thirty-five and forty-two thousand dollars. We've got the thirty thousand set aside, the school is aware that they will have to pay the difference.
Okay, so the school's looking at somewhere between five and twelve thousand dollar difference in?
Yes.
And that's, that's why we're putting a hundred dollars per year, about twelve hundred on top of, or?
No, it's-
The grand total between thirty-five and forty-two? That's actually not about every dollar.
Right. Well, like I said, it's good that they did the town audit, uh, they're familiar with our system. There's really low activity except the first two years. And thereafter, it's fees paid according to schedule.
This, essentially, this is the same, um, engagement letter that we sent to town audits. Name has changed, protect the innocent, I'm only gonna get stuff.
I don't want to say, go home and get my laptop. If you send it to your landlord or get onto them and then-
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the engagement letter with Michael, who's W Green CPA, to do the twelve-year catch-up audit on the coil educational facilities of the board.
Second. Second.
Uh, second, and that's the, do I hear?
Aye, aye, aye.
Yep.
Aye, aye.
Yeah.
You?
Yeah.
Now, in all I think-
Aye, aye.
And the audit should go very, very fast, even though there's ninety bank accounts.
Education facilities trust people, we need your opinion.
Well, I think I just discussed as to, I got that. And the school, okay, this fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, we were asked to send them an invoice, which Lyndon and I put together, so we should be getting that check within the next week.
This is that, this is that check that was taken, they got sent to the school instead of the town when they closed everything out?
Yes. And so the school, like I said, it is wonderful that somebody can read and understand what the legal liabilities are. So, I guess I, I, when it happens, I call him up and I say, oh, it's been good money.
Yeah, I heard about that.
And he's been good to his word.
Yeah, I think, I, I've been, I've been thoroughly impressed with Greg so far.
Now, we will have to have one more year of audits because it lapped over six thirty. So we have three months of activity in fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, not to drag this out anymore, in fact, you have heard, since you've heard a little more. They closed out the audits in May first, but they extended the school's audits, the secondary audits, two years?
Bonds.
Bonds, sorry, not audits, bonds, not nothing.
Oh, that's all school.
Okay, so that doesn't affect R O E and anyway, here's the one-
The school issued those bonds.
Okay.
That was the big confusion in a lot.
Oh, yeah.
These were two separate sets of bond issued by two separate entities.
Well, I'm-
One lagging the other.
I, I, well, the main confusion there was that when we started talking about the second school one, they were talking about that all of that was getting redone or whatever because the bond, that bond was gonna pay off. The, the second building bond that we just had a vote on was gonna pay everything else off, but when that didn't pass, there's nothing to pay it off, so we're trying to figure out where-
Well, they're going to-
They had already closed the line and the school was working on the second one and-
Well, just through their millage rate that they had, we said that millage, not millage, is it millage?
Yes.
Yeah.
It will just, pretty much, it won't go up because we did not pass the bond. But it will stay probably at the levels it is.
It was thirteen forty-four for this year that we've had. And they did a approval to, because it would have stayed at that level, but because they jumped it to twenty-one. So your taxes will go up this year.
They will go up.
But if the bond doesn't pass, the next two years is gonna be like nine. So they're paying high one time and lower, but that was so when they jumped it from, the paper dropped it from twenty-one to thirty-one, it looked like it was a smaller jump to everybody. That's why it was really thirteen to thirty-one.
Well, but right now it's-
So, yeah, that was a twenty percent, six percent, eighty percent.
If it's going to go up.
Yeah.
To go this year-
They're not paying any more money.
Right.
Yeah. For this year for twenty-three, twenty-four will be different.
Yeah, it'll be different. And if there's, it might even go down if the valuation of the area property goes. They will have the same need.
Right.
But it hopefully will be divided by a larger valuation causing the tax.
More people.
More houses, more houses.
Yeah.
But the need will stay the same for the next two years unless they-
Yeah.
Pass another bond.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll do that.
Let go.
Move your hands.
I'd like to march forward, John.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
So we set the next meeting, special meeting, some other time, next week or two weeks from now?
I don't remember.
After Thanksgiving?
I don't remember.
No, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes. So-
The next Thursday, Thanksgiving. I mean, yeah. Come on, Charlie, you don't want to share the dirt with me?
We're on the last weekend, November twenty-seventh, February twenty-one, thirty.
I, I've got nothing on my calendar. For that week, yeah. So, yeah, I want to do that.
You're going to do it going to?
I just have that, and I'll be back often in the morning. About grants, yeah.
And we think we're gonna-
Can I have a second?
Yeah. Think we're gonna get internet by the fourteenth-
Darn you.
December.
Oh, my God, my sister's already got fiber optics up in the cabin.
Yeah, well, they've dropped it, but we've got an appointment to get a site visit and then they're saying December fourteenth.
They love it so much, they got rid of all of their B H S.
That, that, we're doing the same, that's, we're doing-
They're using YouTube and are funding it real substantially.
Yeah, we're doing the same thing.
Later, we just have dropped everything in.
I think it's almost-
And we're just sitting here like an island.
Fifty seventy-five thousand, I mean, fifty seventy-five, seventy-five dollars a month for us, it's gonna drop.
For what?
For internet, we don't have internet where I am.
We tried to get the town and the school to go in with central net.
A T, yeah.
And we couldn't pull it off.
Yeah. The town, everybody but me, I'm on an island by myself.
Because you have C R E C.
I've got, yeah, I've got, I start, I'm the first house that starts on-
C R E C.
C R E C, so.
Congratulations, I know, um, what more?
Yeah, Wayne.
Wayne, no, the job, the-
Uh, Justin.
Jason, Justin, he's loving it, he's loving it. And like I said, I know Sydney brought all of her, the right TV and everything, they've gone, the speed is so fast.
The Nivens have got it too, Gary and Brendan Nivens, they said it was off just last week, one time.
Dylan and, Dylan and, uh, Dylan, Devin caught, there was a firefighter, there was a bomb, they were fifty-one, they're on it too, they said, they said, speed on it, saying that so they can, everybody playing games, all ones, I'm all gone.
Yeah, yeah.
And like I said, I'm trying, I'm really-
But I haven't been internet for nine years that I've been here. No, I haven't.
Because A T N T wouldn't come and drop me along.